Good, that's good.
Check the audio for the recording, I guess.
Yes.
I already do.
We're good, I'm I'm this time I'm ahead of you.
Alright, good, good.
Okay, so um thank you, everybody's here, thank you everybody for coming, it's it's you know seventy people, that's pretty, it's pretty nice. Um and so I think the idea is is that today we're gonna go over some of the earlier stuff in the course. And what that means is either the ideas that I had for that was either to do old labs. Not old labs, sorry, old tutorials. Right, or there's the two practice final exams, right, there's two practice final exams. Practice.
I did one of the past finals and it was good review.
Yeah, I I I did like two thirds of the twenty seventeen one. So um that it does have all the topics in it, of course, because it's the final exam. So what I'm thinking might be good is finish the one that I didn't finish. Do the other one as well, try to see if you can get through that, and if we have time, then look at old tutorials, I think it might be good to do this first, because those seem like good things to do. But let's hear from you guys, like, what do you think? Does that sound good?
Yeah, exams.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Sounds good, so I finished this one up until this twenty seventeen one up until question eleven, and there's how many questions? Twelve, let's see, there's. There's twenty five questions, so I've done the first eleven. So if anybody wants to go through this one and take a look, and if there's any ones from, you know, question one to eleven that don't make sense, then just, you know, ask me and I'll I'll go through it, but otherwise, I'm just gonna start from here. I'm gonna start from question twelve on this one, so yeah. Let's start then, of course, it has the answers already. Highlighted, but that's okay, so two tiny five gram equally charged spheres suspended from two very thin. One meter long threads reach equilibrium when the angle is four point one degrees, what is the magnitude of the charge on each sphere? Okay, so let's draw the situation, I guess maybe I can just take the picture that they drew. Well, no, let's draw the situation, so the situation is that we have. Two spheres suspended from strings and they re have some sort of angle between them. Right, so this is the angle theta. That theta is four point one degrees when they're at equilibrium. What are the forces acting on these spheres? So we know the mass, so we know there's we can account for some gravity, right, so there's a force of gravity, yeah?
I'm sorry for that. Uh I think the angle between them is two theta now, the angle between the.
Yeah, I guess just because of this picture, but what from the words reach equilibrium when the angle is, yeah, I I guess, yeah. I guess so, yeah, that makes sense, so this angle is theta like that. So thank you guys, right? Then we what other forces do we have, well, we have a force of tension going up. Force of tension going up, and then we have a repulsive force like this, which is that electrical force that way. So the idea is is that at this current situation, the sum of the forces equals zero, right, they're at equilibrium here. So um the question is, what is the magnitude of the charge on each sphere? They're the same charge, equally charged spheres. So I'm pretty sure we can just do some of the forces in the Y direction equals zero. Which is gonna be if I define this as positive. That's gonna tell us that uh negative F G. Um plus F T um. Let's see what, someone's got their mic on. So this angle here is also theta. And I want the Y com- the Y component, so I wanna do sine theta, F T sine theta.
Isn't it cos?
Uh yeah, you're right, never mind.
Cause you want I J thing?
Yeah, goes theta, thank you. Um and there we go, and then I'm gonna do some of the forces in the X direction equals zero. And what do we get from that, well, I get negative F E. Um plus F T sine theta equals zero. And what are we solving for, well, we're solving for the charge, which is gonna come from this F E. And we know theta, we don't know the force of tension, but we know F G. So let me expand this a little bit more, so this is our equation one, equation two, so equation one, I'm gonna rewrite as negative M G. Plus F T cosine theta equals zero. And equation two. I'm gonna rewrite as negative F E. Well, that is um F E is Q E, so negative Q E. Yeah, negative Q E plus F T sine theta equals zero. Um I can write E as, so a quick note here is that E magnitude of E is K E. Q one, Q two over R squared, right, R squared.
That that's the formula for the force, not the electrical field.
Oh, yeah, sorry, you're right, so Q one over, yeah, just Q over, R, yeah.
Yep. Oh, you know, it is R squared, it is R squared.
It is R squared? I just don't have the formula in front of me, I just forgot, okay, yeah, there you go, R squared. So uh what's creating the charge, well, it's just the other charge, right, so Q and Q are the same here, so this is gonna be negative. Uh K E Q squared, sorry, Q squared over R squared. Plus F T sine theta equals zero. Right, that's what that second equation turns into. And let's figure out our unknowns, while I have K E, I know that, Q is what I'm looking for, that's my target. R is the distance between them, can I figure out the distance between them, probably from the geometry of the situation. I can, yeah, I could find the distance between them, not too hard. Uh F T I don't know, theta I do know. Let's check, take a look at our equation one, so I know the mass, I know G, F T I don't know, theta I do know, so we just have two equations, two unknowns. What we gotta do first, though, is we just gotta find R. So R is this distance between them, yeah, R is that distance between them. So what I can do is I can find R over two, because look, I know I know this length here, this is a one meter length like that. And I'm gonna do it on this side, just so that less messy. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna find R over two, which is this amount right there, right, so to find R over two. Well, I want the opposite in the hypotenuse, so that's sine, so sine theta equals. Opposite over hypotenuse, R over two over one meter. Right, I know theta. So I can just solve for R here, so R equals two sine theta, so that tells us that R, well, I'll just leave it as two sine. So R, we get that from above. Um I maybe I'll highlight it in orange, there we go. And then, uh so that tells us that R equals two sine theta. So essentially now we have the two equations, two unknowns, I'm gonna rearrange the first equation for F T. The force of tension, so that's gonna give us that equation one is gonna give us that the force of tension is M G. Over sine theta. M G, sorry, over cos theta, yeah?
Can you also divide equation one by two in order to get rid of F T?
Uh not quite, because there's a sum of two things here, I guess if I move one thing over, yeah, if I move, yeah, yeah, if I move the things over and get that. Then I'd have a expression for, yeah, that would probably be faster, so let's actually do that, yeah, let's do that. So instead of doing this sub substituting part, I'm just gonna take the first equation. F T cosine theta equals M G. And take the second equation, which is F T sine theta is equal to K E Q squared over R squared. Take the ratio of these two, technically, I'm gonna do, this is uh, this was our equation two, and this was our equation one, so I'm actually gonna do two over one. Two over one, so this over this, so it's just gonna be, well, I'll write it out fully, so it's gonna be F T. Sin theta over F T cos theta is equal to. K E Q squared over R squared over M G over one, right? And then what happens is that these cancel. And I'm just left with uh tan theta. Is equal to, and now I just do this over here, so it's gonna be K E Q squared over R squared M G. Right, uh yeah, I support M G. And I'm just solving for R, that's my goal here, right, I'm solving for R, no, sorry, I'm not solving for R, I'm solving for Q. And so that's gonna be that Q is equal to, well, sorry, with Q squared is equal to tan theta. Tan theta, R squared, M G over K E, and I'll just square root that. So let's see if that's right. Square M G tan theta over K, yeah, that is the same thing that we have here, so let's see. Uh if it is, so. Tan of four point one. Uh where's four point one, yep, four point, tan of four point one. Times R squared, what did we say R was, we said R was two sine theta. Two sine four point one. And times M, which is the mass of the uh ball, which we said, or the sphere, which was five grams, which is zero point zero zero five kilograms. Times nine point eight one. Over K E and K E is. I don't remember, K E is, I have the sheets here. K E is. Eight, oh, nine times ten to the nine, yeah, nine times ten to the nine. Okay, I got eight point nine four times ten to the negative eight. So, yeah, same, eight point nine four times ten to the negative eight. Uh Coulombs is eighty nine nanoculombs, so if I'm gonna multiply by ten, I gotta put the negative nine there. And yeah, eighty nine nanoculombs. So we got the answer. So I'll write that here, eighty nine nano. Okay, any questions about this?
The two charges had the same charge?
They had the same, yeah. So let's look here. So this figure shows three electric charges labeled Q one, Q two, Q three, and some field lines in the region surrounding the charges, what are the signs of the three charges? Okay, so well, field lines always go away from positive charges, so this is definitely positive. They go towards negative charges, that's definitely negative, and this is definitely positive. So that's all it is, field lines go away from positive charges and towards negative charges, just like the electric field goes away from positive charges towards negative charges.
I wish this question is an oral exam.
I know, I know. This like this is a real exam from before, so they did have it. But.
In person.
In person. Yeah. Okay, number fourteen. The total electric flux through a closed cylindrical surface with those dimensions is equal to that, determine the net charge within the cylinder. So we know that net flux. So net flux is equal to the charge inside over epsilon naught. Um. Right, yeah, through a closed cylinder, so in closed cylindrical surface. Do you want the net charge within the cylinder? So I'm thinking. Okay, we need to find the charge, so Q equals epsilon naught times the flux, whoops, yeah, is that that this is. Times the the flux. And that's it, that's, yeah?
Yeah, that's right.
I don't even think I need it, I think I can just do epsilon naught times the flux, and that should be.
Oh, yeah.
Eight, eight.
Yeah, this one's really easy.
Four two times ten to the negative twelve. Um times the flux, which was negative five, negative five. Doesn't like when I do. Oh. Yeah, negative four point four times ten to the negative eleven. Negative four point four times ten to the negative eleven, so I'm gonna do that, and it's gonna be negative twelve, which is whatever that is, yeah. Okay.
It's pico Coulombs.
Pico Coulombs, yeah, I was struggling to remember the word, yeah. There you go. So, okay, I guess I'll use the, no, I won't use the picture. Kind of hard to get the screenshot without the picture, because it's there, maybe I should be using the non-answer one, but whatever, we can see our answer right away, so I think that's good. Um an uncharged spherical conducting shell surrounds a charge negative Q at the center of the shell. The charges on the inner and outer surfaces of the shell are respectively. Let's see if I understand this. Uncharged spherical conducting shell. Surrounds some negative Q at the center of the shell. The charges on the inner and outer surfaces of the shell are, oh, yeah, okay, so we have some negative charge here. Negative Q, right, then we have a shell surrounding it. It's conductor and it's um. Yeah, that's it, and we're we're asking for what is it positive in here and negative out here, or the other way around? So if there's a negative charge here, that will push away, so I think it's negative on the outside of the shell and positive on the inside. Inner and then outer, yeah, I don't know what this is, what this drawing is here, I'm gonna be honest with you, but. That's what it is, it's just you have a charge on the inside, that's negative, and a conducting shell, so what's gonna happen is that on the surface, there's gonna be two different charges. And so the pos- the negative one's gonna get pushed away. And there you go. There's a whole explanation for this, I don't know why. That one you could just do. Without a whole explanation. Okay, um here we have sixteen, in the diagram, a positive source charge is in the space. Among all three points labeled on the diagram, point blank has the lowest electrical potential. When a negative charge is moved from C to B, the electrical potential of the of the energy of the system either increases or decreases, so to answer this. Let's see here, I want to look at the formula for potential, this is a positive source charge. So the potential from a source from a uh point charge. Is described by this, some radius away, so you see, as you increase the radius, right, so that we wanna know where is the lowest electrical potential? Well, it's gonna be the form of the biggest radius, because as R increases, this value goes down. Right, so B is the lowest electrical potential, and then when you move from C to B, C to B. When a negative charge is moved from C to B, right, so right now here, this has high potential. Sorry, this has this has low potential, and this has high potential. So a positive charge would naturally wanna go down, right, so the potential energy would go down for a positive charge. But a negative charge doesn't like to go downhill from positive, so you know, from from more positive to negative, they're they're they both have a potential, but this is from more positive to negative. And so a positive charge would wanna go down, losing potential energy, but a negative charge doesn't go downhill, it rolls uphill. Alright, so it goes um you're you're increasing potential energy by doing that. Okay, any questions about this?
So you just need more.
You need to do work on the on the electron, or on the negative charge. Yeah. Okay, so let's look here. Um four electrons move from point A to point B in a uniform electric field as shown, rank the electrons in diagrams one through four by the changes in potential, not potential energy. From most positive to most negative. So. Point A to point B, four electrons move from point A to point B in a uniform, so I don't think the four matters. Just some electrons, rank the electrons in the diagrams, so just the separate diagrams, by the changes in potential energy, not potential energy, so the changes in potential energy. So as you go. And it's a electron, so it wants to go the opposite way, so. I think one and one and uh four are the same, and that does that does work here with what I said, one and four are the same. Because you see, when you go against the flow, that's an electron, so I'll use red, you go against the flow of the um. Of the electric field, you're not changing your voltage, but they're the same, so it's the same thing, sorry, this is going from A to B, this is the same thing, same potential difference. One thing to remember is that the electric field is volts per meter, right, so as this increases, as you go to the left, which is to the right, I mean. Um you're increasing your voltage for a positive charge, well, no, you're increasing your voltage period. Yeah, you're just increasing your voltage period, so. We wanna rate it by changes in potential, so if you go from A to B, I mean, the actual distance you travel is the same. Um yeah, so I'm surprised to see this then, three is greater than one, three.
I.
Yeah?
I'm sorry, sorry for that, but I think like electrons usually goes to the opposite side of the electric field. So you will need more force, like more work alongside.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I guess, cause he here you're going like this against the flow.
The question's asking for change in potential, though, it doesn't matter about the flow, right, cause voltage is a scalar quantity, it has nothing to do with the charge um of the particle being moved.
Potential, potential. Potential is related to the energy and work, like. Yeah, if you have more energy, more work, you have more potential.
Um.
It that's about, so we can generate electric potential from a charge, but a charge moving in an electric potential will either move up or down. Like depending on which way the uh E field is, so if it's moving, like if the E field is moving one way, it's moving in the opposite direction.
Is this same as rolling uphill and downhill?
Basically.
This is downhill, like three is.
Right, but it's not asking for uh whether which direction it moves, it's not asking if it's moving uphill or downhill, or whether it's eh easy to move one way or the other. What it's asking is for the hill itself, from moving from point A to B, are you i- is that an uphill, if so, that's positive, right? Because you're going from a low point to a high point, that's why it's C.
So that's why that's why this is, yeah, that's why this is the biggest um potential difference, because you're going, you're going in the direction. So it wants to go, like the electron wants to go uphill, so this is the biggest positive change of potential. This would be the smallest change in potential, because it's gonna be a negative change of potential.
The electron has nothing to do with it, if you set a proton there, it it would be the same answer.
No, it has to have something to do with it, cause if a proton, a proton would want to go. Away from, uh it would wanna follow the field, right?
But it's change in potential, not potential energy.
I know, but I an elec- uh a proton would wanna go to a lower electric potential.
No, potential doesn't have anything to do with charge, potential doesn't depend on charge.
Exactly, yeah. It's not asking which way it wants to go, it's asking, like, what is the difference between those two points?
Basically, the arrows are pointing downhill, okay, any kind of particle.
Just in terms of like the actual field itself.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, but what was she saying, was she was saying something there? Someone was just about to say something there, and didn't hear, yeah, in terms of the actual, yeah.
Oh, I I think Puyo was trying to say something?
Yeah.
I was just saying that the electrons, sorry, the electric field points downhill, so all the particles always want to go downhill, and if you go uphill, that's an increase in potential.
Oh, okay, I guess so, yeah, I see, so if you go uphill, that's no matter what, an increase in potential, yeah, that makes sense. So you're increasing potential here, these are the same, and here you're decreasing potential for regardless of regardless of the charge, yeah, that makes sense.
Springer always made the connection between potential and height, like height doesn't depend on the mass, so that's why uh that's why in this case, the potential doesn't uh depend on the charge.
Yeah, I see. Okay, let's move on to the next one here. Number eighteen, this is labeled a challenging one, so let's see how it goes, and how many questions I see there was in this test, there was twenty five, so one eighteen. Okay, so I included the diagram, just in case we need the diagram, that probably, if it's a challenging one, then it'd be good to have. So two large conducting parallel plates A and B are separated by that distance, a uniform field of that strength in the positive X direction is produced by charges on the plates. The center plate at the origin is, well, starting at the origin. Is an equipotential surface on which V equals zero, an electron is projected from zero from the origin. With an initial velocity of that perpendicular to the plates in the positive X direction as shown in the figure, what is the kinetic energy of the electron? When it reaches, eventually reaches A. Eventually reaches A?
But like reaches plate A.
But didn't it start at plate A, oh, no, it started here, it starts in the middle, yeah, yeah, you're right, starts in the middle. It starts this way, but then we're gonna go this way, cause it's gonna go uphill, yeah, that makes sense. What is the kinetic energy of the electron when it eventually reaches plate A? So I think this is gonna be a conservation of energy thing. So I'm gonna say that delta K plus delta U equals zero. We wanna find the kinetic energy, the final kinetic energy, when it reaches the plate A, so it's gonna be K F minus K I, sorry, not delta K F. K F minus K I plus U F minus U I equals zero, none of these things are zero, though, I guess, I guess U I is zero. U I, it's a zero, it's a it's a zero volts, so U I is zero.
Probably shouldn't split the U, cause we know delta U is Q delta V, right?
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, so just say. That's true, so that's just gonna be um Q delta V. Okay, makes sense, and we're looking for the final kinetic energy, is what we're looking for, what is the kinetic energy, what, yeah? So the final kinetic energy is Q delta V plus K I. And do I know all these things, Q, it's um it's an electron, yep, delta V. Um yeah, I do know, uh I can find it not too hard. Um and then K I is the initial kinetic energy, I know the mass, I know the speed, yeah, so we just need to find that uh a delta V. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna use the fact that I know this distance is one point two meters. Right, and the electric field is. Um a thousand five hundred volts per meter. So I'm just gonna multiply that by one point two, and that'll be our potential difference. So it's gonna be a thousand eight hundred, delta V.
Your difference should be negative, right, cause you're going to a higher voltage from a lower voltage?
Going to a.
We can figure out the signs later, yeah.
Delta V, yeah, I guess it would be negative, though, E equals. Not sure, let's just say, sure, negative one point two, negative delta V. So then.
Wait, I have a question.
Yeah.
So you know how you have the a parallel plates there? Um eh can you scroll up to the diagram?
Yeah.
So you have the parallel plates there, and it has an initial velocity to the right, so that means it's gonna it's gonna be traveling towards B. For a certain amount of time before the force eventually overcomes it, and then it travels towards the left, so isn't that distance more than one point two, the potential difference?
But but if we just if we just do conservation of energy, we don't even have to worry about that, we just say initial condition, final condition, that's all we consider. Right, it doesn't matter how it got from point A to point B, because these are all conservative forces, that's why it doesn't matter, right? So uh that's why we don't have to worry about that, we can just do K, the conservation of energy.
That delta V is negative, because it's you need less less work to go to the positive if you have an electron, it is it is negative. As you're going to the easy side, you you're going to where it wants to go.
Yeah, it wants to go uphill, so it's negative, because the potential difference, they think the uh potential energy is. But it's also an electron, but it's also an, so maybe, because I'm gonna use negative E here for that. Right?
Well, if we look at it, delta V would be negative, and del- eh if if Q was negative as well, then we're gonna end up with more energy, which makes sense, right?
Delta V is negative, and if we we're gonna, oh, yeah, okay, we're gonna end up with a uh increase in.
To lose energy.
No, no, it will, yeah, that's true, actually, no, it has to loo- it has to lose energy, cause the electron is going downhill, well, sorry, it's going, sorry, electron's going uphill, which is what it wants to do.
So it gains energy.
No, it loses energy, like eh same thing, like a proton goes downhill, it loses energy, so that's for a that's for a proton, but electron. Electron goes uphill and it loses energy.
Okay.
Right, so it's going uphill, so it has to lose energy, so this quantity has to be negative. Which means that I think delta V, delta V is supposed to be positive, and I'm just supposed to do negative Q.
I think you have to do like the absolute value of Q and just negative delta V, or.
It's the same, at this point, it's the same thing, at this point, it's the same thing, right, so.
I I don't think it would work like that, though, because like you need to find K F and K I is zero.
K I is not zero.
Yeah, it's not.
It has a certain velocity to the right.
Velocity.
Adam, I think you missed the negative when you rearranged it.
When I rearranged, oh, here?
When Q delta V goes to other side, it's supposed to become negative.
Yeah, you're right, K F, that's supposed to be, yeah, you're right, so this is supposed to be K I. Minus Q delta V. So then here, yeah, so this is gonna be one half M V I squared minus, so again.
Minus, so it's gonna be plus, right?
Yeah, minus minus negative E, and then delta V is still. Positive, this thing is is that this quantity. Yeah, this quantity is supposed to be negative, so that's fine, this is it, then, so it's just plus. E delta V.
I I think, I I think delta B is just uh like the sign of the T V, just a matter of. Or reference frame, it it doesn't, like, it doesn't take in count how the particle is moving. And the Q at like at the end, the the Q and the energy, the equation of the energy, that determines either it's going. Either it's going to go uphill or downhill according to the, according to the charge. So. If eh and they give us the reference frame here, they say minus, minus X and plus X. And that's gonna be determined by, like, that's what will determine the sign of delta V.
So you're saying delta V can be negative here?
No, that we should be positive there.
It should be positive.
Yeah. So this is what I have written here, would be, is is what it is. Because then this is. A negative, negative E, but then it's negative, we're subtracting it, so positive. So that should be good. Okay, um then, so it's zero point five times the mass of an electron, which is nine point one oh nine four. Uh times ten to the negative thirty one, times something squared, V I squared. So V I was ten, one times ten to the seven. Ten to the seven, plus uh E delta V. E is one point six oh two two. Times ten to the negative nineteen, times one thousand eight hundred. So I get, yeah, I get the right answer. Three point three four times ten to the negative sixteen. Three point three four times ten to the negative, yeah, we get the right answer.
Okay, so when we were using that equation over there for uh Q delta V, is there any like uh absolute uh value signs? There to kinda like get rid of any sort of assumptions?
I think, no, there isn't. There isn't any absolute value signs. There isn't any absolute value signs. I I guess technically. Technically, it's absolute value, cause this is distance on the one point two, right? So we, but that's just the distance, so it has to be positive. Um so one point two um uh meters. But because we're going in the negative X direction, but our distance is one point two meters, so there's absolute value on that. And then. Otherwise, no. Otherwise, there's no absolute values. We we did everything exactly how it would work out normally. Putting the negative charge. Rearranging the equation, now it's supposed to be.
Why is the delta V positive again?
Um, well, we're just thinking of. Yeah, the change in, well, yeah, because look, it's going to a more positive side. It's going to a more positive, starting at zero. And this is the positive side, so it would be increasing its potential. So delta V is positive.
Oh, cause it's, it's regardless of the charge, right?
Regardless of the charge, exactly. Does the charge doesn't affect the delta V.
Okay, electric potential energy versus electric potential, right? Okay, thank you.
So it will be decreasing its potential, but increasing its kinetic energy, right?
A de- it, well, it's decreasing its potential energy.
Increasing is.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting faster and faster.
Yeah.
Also, I went to the lecture notes. There, my professor said that delta V is zero at the negative, like normally without any.
Yeah, yeah, normally is, normally it's zero there, yeah. But they gave us this in the question.
Potential energy decreases, potential increases.
Yeah, because it's a negative charge.
Okay, yeah, alright.
Right? Because it's a negative charge. Okay, so, yeah.
Uh, the height doesn't change, so why would potential energy decrease?
Uh, potential, well, it's so it's, it's like, it's going uphill. It's an electron going uphill. So remember, when electrons go uphill, they lose energy, just like when protons go downhill, they lose energy. Alright, lose.
Oh, okay.
Energy, uh electrons are just the opposite, so when they go uphill, they lose energy.
Okay.
For an electron. Okay, um nineteen, a two coulomb charge moves with the velocity of that and experiences a magnetic force of that. The X component of the magnetic field is equal to zero. No, it isn't, but magnetic force of that, okay. But the Y and Z components are not zero. Determine the Z component of the magnetic field. Okay, um so, well, I know that the magnetic field is, um what was it? Q V cross, sorry, Q V cross B, B. No, that doesn't make sense. Force is that, Q V cross B. Yeah, so um I'm looking for the components of B here. So I can write. Yeah, okay, so I can write this as a, I'll write as a vector, so four, negative twenty twelve. Equals two V, which is two, four, six, cross A B C. Right? And then now, when I do this, I'm solving for these things. I know A is, I know the X component is zero. I know this is zero right there. Um, so I could just essentially solve for B and C here, so let's see what happens. So I'm gonna do the cross product. I'm gonna do the cross product, so I'm gonna get a vector out of this. So to do the cross product, I do two, four, six, two, four, six. Zero B C, zero B C, cross off the last two. Four C minus six B, zero minus two C, two B. So what what we get from this is that four, negative twenty. Twelve equals two times four C minus six B, negative two C, two B. And I can just essentially solve what's here. So I'll do the second and the, uh second and the last one. So negative twenty equals negative four C, I'll write a little bit clearly, two times negative two C. Which tells us that, I'll just rearrange a little bit more, so negative ten. Negative twenty equals negative four C over four. Twenty over four is five, yes. So C equals five, C equals C, C equals five. And then here I get twelve equals two times two B, twelve equals four B, and so three, B equals three. So that tells us that the, um, well, the the component is five, so we only needed to find the Z component. So I see I define C as the Z component of the magnetic field, which was five. So that was mostly actually just doing a cross product, but.
Hey, Adam.
Yeah.
I had a quick question about a certain equation. So it's the equation for um the force in a magnetic field and electric field?
Yeah.
It's Q times E plus V cross B.
Yeah.
Right? Would I, when you evaluate that, do you do the cross product first and then add the electric field onto the vector? Or do you, or can you add that like?
No, I think you have to do the cross product first. Pretty true.
Okay.
Yeah. Even just like order of operations, you have to do multiplication right before you do. Just subtraction, so I think I, it still counts for vectors.
Okay.
But yeah, there we go. So there's that. Any questions about number nineteen?
So when you have a cross product in an equation, uh you can't isolate for variables the same way you would have, right?
Yeah, like I can't isolate for B here.
Okay.
Yeah, I say for B. You have to do the cross product, so what I did is I just say, I I don't know the 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 Y and Z components, so I just set those as variables, and then just do the cross product. And then when you get to this point, you can just match terms and solve. Okay, so that was nineteen. So number twenty is a neutron, is accelerated from rest. Through a ten kilovolt potential difference, and then enters a region with a uniform magnetic field perpendicular to its velocity with a magnitude B. Eh is that, what is the right radius of the resulting circular path? So we're looking for the radius of the, so the cyclotron radius, right? So R equals M magnitude V. Over Q magnitude B. So what do we know here? Well, we know M and Q, we know B. We don't know V quite yet. Right? But it's accelerated from rest through a ten kilovolt potential difference. So remember that we know Q delta V equals delta U. And just through um conservation of energy, I can just say delta K plus delta U. Delta U, sorry, equals zero. In other words, K uh K F minus K, K I, um keep writing things wrong. Plus Q delta V equals zero. So we're looking for K F, well, we're looking for V F, sorry, but this is essentially it. So that's gonna be K I, oh, and. K I is zero. So this is just gonna be, K F is negative Q delta V. Negative Q delta V, so one half. M V F squared equals, so I'm gonna get negative here. Why do I get negative? Q is a positive charge. Why am I gonna get a negative where I'm not supposed to? Q delta V. Was that, or was that not for me? Probably not for me. So this is just, well, what happens if I rearrange? I'm just gonna get, yeah, negative two Q delta V over. M, yeah, over M in a square root.
For this question.
Yeah.
Do we use that? Do we use, we made a formula, I think it's that, actually. We made a formula in one of the labs where we found the speed of a. Uh, I think it was either a proton or an electron with respect to um. Like all of this, like the the uh potential difference and stuff.
Yeah, I think it's this at the end, what I just wrote.
Negative, it's positive. I think it's positive two Q delta V over M.
I think, I think that we just consider the positive, like everything has to be positive, just because of the sake of the square root. Like, it it's like everything is a uh absolute value, like we don't really care about the sign, which is.
It's just that the sign didn't, the sign came from rearranging this equation, so that seems important. Right? That seems important that it came from rearranging this equation, but okay. I remember there being a negative in the lab, and there was a reason, I think delta V was negative, so that's why it was okay. Because then the result was fine. So let's just try it and see what happens. So square root of two Q, Q is. Um, one point six times ten to the negative nineteen. Oh, sorry, two times, not two, twenty one. Delta V, which was ten kilovolts, so ten times ten to the three. Uh, yeah, kilos times ten to the three, yeah. Uh over M, M was three point three times ten to the negative twenty seven. So I get this velocity, V F equals nine, eight, three, seven, three, one point nine. And I'll just sub that into here. So. Yeah, so this is just gonna be answer. Times the mass, which we said was one point six, times ten to the negative nineteen. Over Q B, Q is, oops, sorry, I put M, yeah, put in the wrong spot there. Is that what you're about to say?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, one point six times ten to the negative nineteen on the bottom. Times one point six. So I get zero point zero one three. R equals zero point zero one three, which is thirteen millimeters. Yeah. So, just ignore the negative. Um, I don't really have a good reason why. It's a negative in a square root, so we just say we don't want that, and just.
Yeah, but I think you're right saying, I think you're right saying that the. Delta V is gonna be negative, because it is, it is a positive charge, and it's going from ten volts to zero volts, right?
Okay, then that makes sense, I guess. So the potential difference of the, that the actual thing will experience is negative. So it'll cancel.
But it doesn't stay negative, otherwise wouldn't I just have said, yeah, the, it goes through a negative ten kilovolt potential difference?
No, no, it goes from a high potential to a low potential.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the thing is, it's been accelerated, so it makes sense.
That's true. It's like, it's like, it's starting at the top of the hill. It's starting at ten kilovolts, and it's rolling down the hill, getting the energy, getting the velocity.
Yeah, exactly. So it will lose potential.
So the delta V is from high to low, so it's the delta V is negative.
Yep.
So that's the answer, yeah, that makes sense.
Uh, so where'd you get that uh equation exactly, where the radius equals the mass times?
This one?
Yeah.
That's, that's from the lecture slides, this is called the cyclotron radius.
Cyclotron radius, okay.
That's not voltage, uh by the way, that's.
That's, that's speed, yeah, that's speed.
Can you explain the the delta V being negative again?
Yeah, so it's going from. It's starting, it's a proton, well, it's a positive charge. It's starting at high potential, and it's going down to low potential, well, to to zero. And this is where we get that V, the velocity, right? So it's, it's starting at rest, right? It's at rest here, and it's going downhill. So here, we have some sort of positive ten kilovolts, and here we have zero volts. So delta V is negative. It's going down, the voltage is going down.
Oh, so, yeah, it's because of zero, mixing, thanks.
Okay. That is twenty, so here is twenty one. A Hall effect probe operates with a one hundred milliamp current. When the probe is placed in a uniform magnetic field of that magnitude, it produces a hall voltage of that. When it is used to measure an unknown magnetic field, the hall voltage is that. What is the magnit- magnitude of the unknown magnetic field? Um, it seems like a ratio, but let's see, I need my hall voltage equations. It's not going for some reason? Okay, give me one second. My notes just have to load. Takes one second. Okay, uh Hall effect. Where's the Hall effect? Here it is. So the voltage. The probe isn't that much. Yeah, here. This seems like it might be important, so. Hall voltage is related to current through a conductor. This is the equation I have. So we have delta, what do we know? We know. In the first situation, the first setup, we know I, we know uniform magnetic field of that. Used to measure an unknown field, the voltage is that. What is the magnitude of the unknown field? Yeah, so I think, I think I just take a ratio here. So I know delta V H for the initial. So I'll say, uh for 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 number one, is equal to I one, but I assume it's the same, same current, so it's just I. Over B one, which is what we know. D is the dis- the separation, but it's the same probe, so it's gonna be the same thing. N is the charge density, but same probe, it's gonna be the same thing. And Q, and then, what's changing? The current? No, current is the same, sorry. And. This is a hall voltage. Yeah. Hall voltage of that. Yeah, I I really think.
Isn't this just a linear increase? If the only thing that's changing is the magnetic field.
So, so we're gonna find that here. We're gonna see that it's a linear increase, but yeah, it looks like that is what it is. It's gonna be B two D over N A Q, and I take the ratio of these two things, delta eh uh delta V H. One over delta V H two is equal to B one over B two. And I'm solving for B two? Yeah. Makes sense to me. So it's gonna be B two equals B one, delta V. H two over delta V H one. Let's try it. B one. Zero point zero six five. Delta V H two is zero point four five. Times ten to the negative six over uh zero point seven five, times ten to the negative six. So I get zero point zero three nine. Yep, thirty nine millitesla. So I get that. B, well, see. Zero point zero three nine tesla. So yeah, that worked. It was just a ratio. So you just have like two, whenever you have two situations that you're comparing. The difference, like one variable is changing between it, or one one's unknown, and you know how much one variable is changing, then you can just take a ratio and you'll get. So that's question twenty one. Let's take look at twenty two. Twenty two is here. Someone said something? Oh, maybe not for me. Um, so. Let's see, two long wires each carry a current of ten amps. Uh, two long wires each carry a car- current of ten amps into the page as shown in the figure. What is the magnetic field at a point A due to the current flowing in the two wires? Okay, so, yeah, well, I mean, essentially, we already, this kinda gave it to us, so the image here is a little helpful, but, yeah, the idea is, is that. Okay, this, this magnetic, this wire. Yeah, the idea is, is that, okay, this, this magnetic, this wire, the current is going into the page. So the, um, field. Goes around like that, similarly, the field here goes around like that. Which means at this point, we're gonna have a B one like that, that's caused by here, and at this point. We're gonna have a B two caused by here, and we just take the vector sum of those two. Things, so, the, are these equally spaced apart, so it looks like the Y components are gonna cancel. Sorry, the X components are gonna cancel. Because everything's the same, yep, everything, everything's the same, so we just need to consider the Y components, right, so, see, X components do in fact cancel, there's nothing there. So the Y components of each of these things, well, it's gonna be the magnitude of B one. So, just, just the Y components. The magnitude of B one, and we need the Y component of it now, this is forty-five degrees, because. Because. This is forty-five degrees. Right? And everything's symmetrical? So, yeah. You can consider it like that. Um, so this is just gonna be, well, I need the Y, what does matter, goes forty-five sine forty-five, the same, but I guess if I wanna take the Y component. I would do sine forty-five. Okay, uh, defining that as positive, and then plus the magnitude of B two also sine forty-five. Now, what are these magnitudes? Uh, yeah, I guess I would say. What do I say, the resultant field, magnitude of the resultant field is that. So, what are each of these, uh, B fields from a wire, well, there's a formula for that, um, so. The. Long wire, two long wires, so I think we're, I think we can do, yeah. I think the magnitude of the magnetic field is mu naught I over two pi A. For an infinitely long wire. And so, we just use that here, so it's gonna be. Magnetic, magnetic field is gonna be mu naught I over two pi A. Times sine forty-five, which is root two over two. Now, what's A though, A is the distance, which is gonna be root, root two, which is gonna be root two. Because it's one and one, it's gonna be root two. Plus. Mu naught I over two pi root two, root two over root two. Um, same magnitude, because it's the same side, not root two over two, root two over two. Um, so it's gonna be essentially this just twice, right? So it's gonna end up being the root twos. Root twos cancel. And then it's gonna be two times one of these, it's gonna cancel with the one on the bottom, so it's gonna be mu naught I over pi. And then. Uh, everything else I, I have, I just need the current, right, ten amps, that's all it gave us, yeah, ten amps, so I'm just gonna say mu naught. Times ten over pi.
I think it's over two pi, isn't it?
But there's two of them.
Yeah, but there's four in the denominator.
Well, you're right, there's four, there's four in the denominator, yeah, yeah, you're right. So I get two times ten to the negative six for some reason, did I mess up what mu naught is?
No, the distance is in centimeters, not meters. So you're just off by a factor of a hundred.
The distance in centimeters, oh, this is in centimeters, so this is root two centimeters. So this is in centi- I'll just put centimeters down here, so I need to do times ten to the negative. Times ten to the negative two. Yeah.
Uh, can I ask a question?
Uh, in one second, let me just finish typing this in. So then I get, so then I get a four, yeah, that's right, there we go. So then I get two times ten to the negative, okay, go ahead.
Uh, how did you get squared to two as your distance?
Uh, because that's gonna be, that, that's the distance from like here to here, right, so. This is, this is a side length of one, this is a side length of one.
Oh, okay, 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 that makes sense, okay, I was thinking distance between the two wires.
Yeah, I know, no, we need distance to, to this point here, which is just root two.
Okay.
And there we go, that's the question, so any questions about this one, yeah?
Yeah, so for this question, why is there a B one, um, pointing like the completely opposite way?
Well, it's not that, it's not, it's not like opposite way, it's like B, this is wire one, this is wire one, right? So, wire one is, has a magnetic field that goes like this, right? So if you imagine what it would look like at this point, it would look like that.
Okay.
And similarly for this one, it has, this has a magnetic field that looks like that, so if you imagine what it looks like at this point, it would look like that.
And, uh, were we told that it was gonna be forty-five degrees?
Well, we know because of just how symmetrical it is, I can also just do, I know these side lengths, this is a, this is a one, one, like a. It's a forty-five, forty-five, ninety triangle, has to be, cause it's a side length one, side length one, side length root two. So.
I see.
You can, you can ma- you can calculate it with trigonometry if you wanna do that too. But yeah, okay. So, there's this question. Let's see what's next. Should open discussions, just see if there's anybody that wants to go. Um, we have three streamers, good, yes, thank you for three streamers. Um, and I will open discussions just to see. Anybody has said anything there, okay. Number twenty-three, a wire of mass fifty, length forty, is suspended horizontally by two vertical wires, which conduct that current as shown. In the figure, the external magnetic field in the region is directed. Into the paper and has a magnitude of that. What is the tension in either vertical wire, ignore the magnetic field generated by the wire, wires themselves? Okay. So, um. Let's see, we have a magnetic field that's going into the page. Like that, we know that. This is, this has a, we know this mass and this length here. So we can also find, we're looking for the, what is the tension in the vertical wire? Well, okay, so, the, there's a force of gravity, which is adding to the tension, so the tension, there's two times this tension going up, so this tension. Force of tension. Force of tension up like that, a force of gravity down, and then we have a magnetic force going in what direction? Current is this way, this way, down, so we also have a magnetic force down. So if we look at the sum of the forces. In the Y direction equal to zero, because it's, um. Doesn't really say, but it's suspended, so it's, it's, it's not moving, so. There we go, then I define this as up, so it's gonna be two force of tension minus the fo- the magnetic force. Minus the force of gravity equals zero, and I'm trying to solve for a force of tension, right, yeah. So force of tension is gonna be the magnetic force plus MG, I'll just go right to MG over two. And then what's the mag-? Current is going to the left, to the left, current is going this way.
Okay.
So, yeah, force is down, um, and then, so now. Force, the magnetic force, so I'll write it over here, force of tension, so magnetic force is Q. Um, no, it's not that, it's I L cross, L vector cross. B vector plus MG over two, I can do this. Um, like numerically, so I, we know I, so I'll just say I, do we know I, yeah, we do. Then magnitude of L is just the length of the string, times the magnitude of B is just the magnitude of the magnetic field, and the angle between them is ninety degrees. Cause it's going straight in, and the current is going straight that way, so it's gonna be sine of ninety, which is one. Right, plus MG over two. Everything I can just plug in now, MG I know. Um, length I know, everything, everything I know, so I'm just gonna plug it in. So it's I, which is eight, times the length, which is zero point four meters. Times the magnetic field, which is sixty times ten to the negative three, times one. Plus, the mass, which is zero point zero five kilograms, yep. Zero point zero five kilograms. Times nine point eight one over two, I get zero point thirty-four newtons.
Um, okay, so I've got a question about this, uh, force that you have from, due to the magnetic field.
Okay.
Uh, did you have to do two right-hand rules? One, finding out where the direction of the magnetic field, and then the second being the force. Or the direction of the force created by the magnetic field?
It gives us the direction for the magnetic field, it says an external magnetic field in the region is directed into the paper. So while I already know the magnetic field is into the paper. So from that, I can find the direction of the force, that's what I had to use a right-hand rule for, is the force. So, fingers in the direction of the current, it's, it might, probably not useful to look at me doing it, so. Probably try to do yourself, but fingers in the direction of the current. And your fingers curl into the magnetic field, so they should curl into the page, and your thumb is in the direction of the force, which is down.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense then.
Which direction is the current again?
To the left.
Okay.
Another question, um, in the, like, in the way the current is going, you would have like a left and right force. On the vertical sections of wire, I guess, so, how, how is that handled, cause like I'm assuming that it would be zero, right? Like, or do you just ignore it?
Ignore the magnetic field generated by the wires themselves. That line right there.
Um, no, no, like, no, no, I mean, um, there's, sorry, I meant to say force, like, there's, there'd be force on, on it.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're thinking like, some force here from these guys, right? But that would be caused by the magnetic field generated by the wires themselves. Right, that, that force is caused by this magnetic field, so you ignore those forces too. That, that, that also can't, the sentence also said means ignore that too.
Oh, I see, okay.
Those would be directly caused by the field.
Right, okay, cool, thank you.
And they really wouldn't matter because they're on like the horizontal and we're focusing on the vertical.
Yeah, exactly, that doesn't, that doesn't add to the tension.
I have a quick question, sorry. So how did you get, um, ninety degrees again, so is it like the force?
If the, if the angle between the, the direction of the field. And the direct, so the field vector and the, a current, well, the, the length, length vector.
Okay.
Right? So length vec- so it's like this and like this. It's going directly into the, directly into the page and directly to the left, so it's ninety degrees.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yeah, sorry, I still didn't get where did it mention that the current was going towards the left?
Oh, sorry, I, I, I'm, my drawing is covering it, there's, there's a little tiny arrow.
Oh.
Little tiny arrow.
Okay, okay, my bad, my bad.
Don't worry.
Thank you.
So, yeah. Okay, that is twenty-three, next we have twenty-four, so there's just two more left in this practice. Um, and what time is it here, it's a little forty-five minutes, so that's okay. Two long parallel wires carry unequal currents I one and I two in opposite directions. It is known that I one. It is known that I one, I two equal three, they're both three, is that what I was trying to say, no?
Oh, it's trying to say that they're equal three.
Oh, the ratio is three, okay.
It's the ratio.
Yeah.
That's the ratio, it's the ratio.
I one over I two equals three, that's what this is, okay. I've just never seen everything like that, um, the magnitude of the magnetic field at a point in a, in the plane of the wires. And ten centimeters from each wire is that, what is the value of I one? Okay, so. Yeah, this isn't, this isn't gonna be too bad, so let's figure out, okay, first of all, that wire right there going into the page, magnetic field goes like this. Right, so right here we have one magnetic field vector. From one, just like that, and then from this one it's going out like that, so it's gonna go this way. So we have another magnetic field vector, both pointing in that direction, so they add together. Right, only in the Y direction as well, so the, the, the magnetic field. Is just the magnitude of B one plus the magnitude of B two. Right? Um.
You're not that work of the field because of the right-hand rule, right, like with the wire?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, thank you, and X is in the page or outside of the page, you know?
Uh, X is into the page, I look, how I remember is this looks like an O, so out. This is like an O for out, so it's coming out of the page, and this is just not an O, so it's in. That's the.
And that's here.
Um, okay, so B one to get the mag- so in general, to get the magnetic field. From any distance from a infinite wire is gonna be mu naught I over two pi A. You not I over two pi A. Uh, we know it's infinite because it's long parallel wires, right? And then, so I can just do that now, so mu naught I, so I one over two pi A. A is the distance, so that's just gonna be, uh, ten centimeters, so I'll just call that A. So, A equals zero point one meters. Plus, mu naught I two over two pi A, same distance. This is equal to the magnitude of the magnetic field. So we're gonna combine this equation in here now though, right, so I can say we're solving for I one. So I'm gonna say that I two. So I one over three equals I two. And so in this equation, I'm gonna sub in, I'm gonna sub that into here. And I'm gonna get the magnitude of B equals mu naught I one over two pi, oh, you know, I'll factor something out if I can factor something, so mu naught. Over two pi A. I one plus I one over three. And now I can just solve for I one. Right, which is gonna be two pi A magnitude of B over mu naught. Equals I one times one plus a third, one plus a third. Right, so I one equals, um, four thirds, yeah, four thirds, so. Um, I'm not gonna do any, I'm just gonna type, like, write it explicitly. Um, that, and it's gonna be four thirds, so two, yeah, four thirds, uh, mu naught. And there we go, that's it. Technically this, well, you know, just to avoid confusion.
We're gonna have to plug in and see what, uh, who the answer is.
What, what is it, what did you say?
We have to plug in or no?
Yeah, yeah, to get the answer, to get the actual numerical answer, I will plug in. Two pi times zero point one times, uh, four times ten to the negative six. Over four thirds times mu naught, mu naught is, um. Four, oh yeah, four times three point one four one five nine two six five times ten to the negative. Seven, so I get one point five. And that is tr- that is correct.
Easy.
Yeah, that wasn't bad, this is not really a super hard test, so. It's nice if we got questions like this, this is the last one on the twenty seventeen midterm, twenty seventeen final exam, I mean. Um, and then there's also the twenty eighteen one, which we can get going on after, make sure I am actually doing the twenty seventeen one, right? Yeah, I am doing a twenty seventeen.
It would be nice if they did give us questions like this, just create.
Of course. Of course. Okay, yeah, this is a final. Let's see here, let's see, what am I, okay, good. Two long parallel wires separated by ten centimeters carry currents in opposite directions. The first wire carries that current, the second wire carries that current, what is the force per unit length exerted on each other? Well, um, there's our formula. I don't know what they're doing here. E, oh no, it's probably F over, that's what that is. So yeah, so to do, this is the formula for. The force between them, but we want force per unit length, so that's just mu naught I one, I two over two pi A. Right, and then I just plug everything in, A is, um, the distance between them, and that's, that's it, that's it. So, uh, four.
Can we do like a quick question about standing waves, maybe?
Sure, well, let's do the next test, and then there's gonna be, probably gonna be one there, I'll go, I'll jump right to the standing wave one there.
Wait, so this thing here is just F over L, but it was like cut off weird?
Yeah, that's just F over L, yeah, yeah. Divided by. So I get eight times ten to the negative five. Yeah, and then, um, which direction is it in, well, they're going in opposite directions, so since opposite directions there, it's a repulsive force. And yeah, that's it. So, there we go. Okay, that's the twenty seventeen midterm, I keep saying midterm, that's the twenty seventeen final exam, so let's take a look at. The twenty eighteen one, let's see if any questions, twenty eighteen one starts with a bunch of early stuff. Let's see any questions. Twenty eighteen one starts with a bunch of early stuff. It's in order, it's in like the order that we care about, so. Um, let's take a look at those then. Um, and there'll definitely be a standing wave one, not in not long. So this is now gonna, we're now gonna start the twenty eighteen midterm.
Um, okay, sorry, I got a quick question. Um, it's when we were introduced to the, where when we did that one example where we had the cyclotron radius. So I just want to know, I mean, I was attending Springer's lectures and I don't remember him bringing that up. Was it one of those lectures that he recorded?
Okay, it was, yeah. So um, this one here is a zero point two kilogram block on a horizontal frictionless surface is attached to an ideal massless spring. Whose spring constant is that? The block is pulled from its equilibrium position at that to the displacement of that and is released from rest. The block then executes simple harmonic motion along the horizontal X axis. When the displacement is that, what is the acceleration of the block? Okay, so we wanna have some sort of um. We wanna have, we wanna describe this.
Wait, I think I know how should we should we do should do it.
Okay, uh sure.
So that, so we should take that formula for uh. Force of a spring is like K times the change in um like displacement. So you just take that formula and you like relate that with M MA or something.
That is, that is what I was.
Yeah, no, no, negative K.
Right, yeah.
Do negative K delta X equals MA and then yeah, just open there.
Start with F equals MA, what are the, what's the, well, the sum of the forces equals MA. What's the sum of the forces? It's only one force, there's just, it's a. Ignore, or did it say ignore gravity?
Anything you do, don't you? But it's a, it's a frictionless, so.
Yeah, frictionless, so that means that even if there was gravity, there's no friction from it. Um, so yeah, so the only force acting on it is. Uh, the force, the spring force, which is M A, and so then we just wanna solve for A here. Right, so what's the spring force? Negative K delta X over M. And do we know everything here? M we know, K we know, delta X we know. Yeah, so I think I.
Cause just negative, oh yeah, I just negative uh. Zero point zero five two times K divided by M and that's it, should be. Wait, even though the question says it can go from zero to point eight, it's actually just asking for point zero five two, right? Okay.
Uh, and yep, I get nine ninety-two point ninety-two point uh. Ninety-three meters per second squared. I just wanna have the same number as up there, yeah.
Where did it?
Yeah, you can do this question in more than one way.
Yeah, you can.
Use the ample amplitude to do it, but uh this ways faster. The other way would be to make the equation for position, like like for the simple motion and then derive it twice to get.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, sorry, was our delta X zero point eight or was it the negative zero point zero five?
Negative zero point zero five two.
Cause there's no moment you're trying to find it at it, it's like, if it goes to zero point eight, that's like, it's like the amplitude bot. We just care about where it's at at that moment and that's where it's at at that moment. This is kinda like a, this is kind of an energy approach if you think about it, kind of.
Did it with, if we did it with the amplitude, then I think we could do it like that with the energy approach, but yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, that's fine, that's good, we did, we did it right, so let's try this one. Um, in this problem, times are denoted hour, hour, minute, minute. Treat Earth as a uniform sphere with that radius. And masses that, treat Mars as a uniform uniform sphere with that radius and ma and mass that, okay. A pendulum clock keeps perfect time when it is located on the surface of Earth. An astronaut then brings the clock to the surface of Mars but makes no other changes to the clock. The astronaut's ship computer is perfectly synchronized with clocks on Earth by satellite. When the ship's computer reads exactly twelve PM, he sets the pendulum to twelve PM and starts running. One hour later, when the ship's computer reads one PM, what time does the pendulum read? Okay. So.
Gravy question.
Yeah, so what we gotta, what we have to do is, well, we look at the pendulum, so the pendulum has, if I look at my pendulum equations. And there we go, so we know that. The. Yeah, so the period, first of all, on Earth is it keeps perfect time when it's located on the surface of Earth. Well, period is, period is gonna be sixty seconds, right? Sixty sec, I guess we'll just do in minutes, so one minute. Yeah, cause the answer's gonna be in minutes, so we just do it in minutes, so period is one minute. Then we want the, if we want the angular frequency. That's gonna be um, omega is two pi over T. Right? Two pi over T, right? So um, so it's, yeah, two pi minutes. Two pi radians per minute. Minute. From here, what do we know about the the thing? We know. We're gonna take a ratio, I'm pretty sure. So you know what, I might not even have to do this. I think I might say T equals two pi over, yeah, this is what I do. T equals two pi over omega. Omega is G, sorry, the square root of G over L. Square root of G over L. So gravitational force over gravitational field over L, the length of the string. So I'm gonna sub that in here, T equals two pi over square root G over L. Someone's got their mic on, could they mute? And so this is true on both situations, on both places. So on Earth. This is T one and G one, L is the same. On uh Mars, it's gonna be this square root G two over L, L is also the same. Right? We take the ratio, I'm solving for uh T two, right? I'm so trying, I need to find the period of this, right? The second period. Because that'll help us figure out this thing here. I don't know exactly know how yet, but we need to figure out the period of the of the other pendulum. So I'm gonna take the ratio, I'm gonna do T two over T one. Which is gonna be two pi over square root G two over L over. Two pi over square root G one over L, and now what cancels? Well, two pi, two pi cancels, L and L cancels. Right? So this is just going to be square root, square root of G one over G two. G one over G two. So we know T two over T, so if I wanna find T two, it's gonna be T one times the square root of G one over G two. What are all these things? Well, G one is nine point eight one and G two, we just have to figure out what it is. Right? We gotta figure out the.
We don't choose that formula where it's like GM over R or something?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So the the gravitational field, magnitude of the gravitational field is capital G. Mass creating the field over R. R squared or R?
Are there you right now? Uh, R squared.
R squared?
Yes. You know how Jasper has made like a better formula sheet? Are we allowed to use that on the exam?
Um, I'm I'm really not sure. I don't know what formulas she's allowed to use.
It's open book. So I mean, it's your notes. It's not policy sixty, to share notes.
And we share it, it's not like, gee, like it's not, it's just a formula sheet, right? Like it's not a.
Yeah, don't bring like TikTok into this.
Yo, she said rise the notes, bro. Nobody, just TikTok yourself while during the exam, right? Just sorry.
GM over R squared here, um, R of, I should be clear, this is Mars and this is Mars. And now I can plug everything in to get the period. So that's T one was one minute, so it's gonna be in minutes, one minute. Times the square root of G one is nine point eight one. Over the fraction G, capital G, gravitational constant, six point six seven. Four times ten to the negative eleven, times the mass of Mars. Which is. Six point thirty-nine times ten to the twenty-three. Over the radius of Mars squared. Which is. Three, three ninety, one, two, three, three extra zeros, cause it's in kilometers. And I got one point six T two equals um. One point six. Two five, or six two six. Okay, so we know the ra, we know T one and T two, this was one, one point six two six. Now I know that T one. Is seconds. So in.
No, isn't it minutes?
It's in minutes, yeah, it's in minute. It's in minutes, um, so one hour later, the ship reads twelve o'clock. I need a ratio again, um, T one equals or T one. Oh yeah, T one times.
Speed it like the time passed, so sixty. Uh, isn't that just one point six to six minutes? Cause they would do everything based on minutes, so that isn't that just like?
Oh yeah, so just multiply by sixty, no, just multiply.
I mean, I thought, I mean, I did, I did a, I did sixty divided by one point six two and then I just added that to twelve. And I got, I got twelve, I got twelve point thirty-six nine and that's close, that's closest to twelve point, you know, twelve thirty-seven.
Sixty divided by this would give you what? That's how many minutes? Minutes per hour.
Minutes behind, yeah, minutes per hour behind and then I just add the hour.
And this is.
Cause I look sixty, sixty divided by one point six two six gets you thirty-six point nine. That's how much is lagging behind. So if we were to go back to the to the original equation, ju- we just simply add that to twelve. Cause that's that's originally much behind when compared to on Earth.
Sorry, let me, thirty-six. I'm just, yeah, the the ratio is just confusing me here. This, what is, this is giving me what exactly? Sixty minutes divided by one point six two six is giving me, okay, I see it's giving me thirty-six point nine minutes. No, it's giving me six thirty-six point nine.
Per hour.
Well, it's uh, yeah, it's given, yeah.
Per hour?
Giving you how many like times dear Mars pendulum would tick um in the hours, so then you could kind of find the difference there.
Yeah.
And the otherwise it would take thirty.
The other ones, yeah, the also the the T one takes once per minute, right, on Earth and then T two, which is one point six two six. Per uh, like that's our period of the tick and then per tick we're increasing by like one minute, right, on the actual clock itself.
Yeah.
So then, so then by dividing sixty by one point six two six, you're finding how many times the Mars pendulum ticks? And then you would just add that to twelve PM, which would give you um.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, that makes sense. Okay, this, this is ticks, ticks of. Mars pendulum. Right? So it starts at twelve, it starts at twelve, starts at twelve o'clock. After this many ticks, it's twelve thirty-seven, let's just say. So twelve thirty-seven, how many minutes behind is that? That's twenty-three minutes behind.
So basically, the entire question is knowing that takes a pension on what they're knowing physics.
Yeah, I guess so.
You're sorry for the phone call, I'm a busy man again.
Think about, think about this way, if if you fail physics, you become a clockmaker.
Yeah.
My grandpa is, my great-grandpa is the clockmaker.
Yeah.
In yeah, like a while, that's I heard, like that's a, um, he was a clockmaker, something like that, well, not not in the Canada. Thank you, thank you. I de- I definitely ask to know the atmosphere of the class.
Sure, yeah, I appreciate it.
Could you explain what was the thirty-six point nine thing again?
Thirty-six point nine, yeah, this is the number of ticks per hour. Ticks per hour. So in one hour of regular time, I guess, yeah, in one hour of our time, like Earth time. Uh, how many times will the clock tick? It'll tick thirty-six point nine times. On Mars, on Mars, yeah, on Mars. So then I'll just say thirty-seven, take thirty-seven times, yeah, I'll say thirty-seven. And then, so that means the time will read twelve thirty-seven, which is twenty-three minutes behind one o'clock.
Okay, alright.
Wait, so the um, so the period on Mars is slower because. Um, sorry, yeah, it's twelve thirty-seven and it's slower because the period is uh longer.
Yeah, it takes longer for each tick, right? Okay, so let's look at the next question. We have, that was number two, so number three is here. A sinusoidal wave of wavelength that and amplitude that travels on a string with speed that in the negative X direction at T equals zero, the piece of string at X equals zero. Has a displacement of zero and is moving downwards with um neg, in the negative Y direction. Which in these, which one of these equations is the correct representation for the wave? Okay, um, so. Yeah, this is, okay, this is what we do. Well. Okay, I guess I'll I'll work it out. So you could either build it yourself or since you have the answers, you can just check all the answers, but let's just do it. So sinusoidal wave has a wavelength of one point five, amplitude of zero point two. And speed of three in the negative X direction. So in general, that's gonna be zero point two sine or well cosine, it's really, but since the answers are in sine, I'll just do in sine. Zero point two sine omega um. Omega, no, KX plus omega T plus phi, right? So K is two pi over lambda, right? Yeah, I think so. And.
Sorry, the sign in front of the omega determines whether it's traveling to the left or to the right.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay, so that should be, um, well, if, yeah, no, that that should be positive, actually, that should be positive, cause they were going in the negative direction, so that should be positive. So I can find K, I can find omega, how can I find omega? I know the speed, V equals. Uh, V equals lambda F.
I think you care about omega, cause it isn't that like the one that's always constant, like can you go up?
Well, there's a two pi, there is a two pi here. Let's assume we don't see the answer, so um. How how would you deal with it? So yeah, I can find um, I can find F like this. And then, so, okay, let's find lambda first. Oh no, lambda we have, sorry, we have lambda, let's find K first. No, we just leave it as two pi over, that's fine, that works, this works for me, I'll just say, I'll make it more exact, two pi over uh three halves. Three halves, yeah, so four over three. And that does match what we have, four over three pi. And then F equals V, which was three, over lambda, which is one point five, which is gonna be two. Now that we have F, I can say omega equals two pi F. So omega equals four pi. Four pi, so in general, now our equation is zero point two sine. Four pi over three. X plus four pi T plus phi. And now we need to figure out phi is. Well, we know that at T equals zero. The zero zero item has a displacement of zero. Moving and it's moving in the negative Y direction, it's moving down. Right? So that's gonna help us choose our answers here, so. Um, what we can do is, okay, so it's the zero zero element and it has um a displacement of zero. So it's gonna be zero equals zero point two sine phi. That's what that'll simple to, simplify to. So in other words, sine phi equals zero. And sine or phi equals sine inverse of zero, so it's gonna either gonna be. It's gonna be pi K. Right? Why shouldn't you use K, pi N? Pi, zero, pi, two pi, yeah, pi N. So which one is it now though, right? So is it pi or is it zero, is it um? Pi, is it two pi? Well, we have to figure it out, so. If I, I mean, if you can kind of imagine like this, if it was zero, it would look like this. We wanted to have a negative Y displacement to start, so that means you gotta start here, so the answer is pi. So our final answer would be the one with pi. Right, we wanna start, the question gave it to us, it said, moving in the negative Y direction, so we need to start moving in the negative Y direction, so. That's, if we, if it was zero, we'd start moving in the positive Y direction, if it was two pi, we'd also start moving in the positive Y direction, so that's be pi. Or three over. Yeah, sorry?
No, the same page, we got the pi. Was it over three, four over three? Is it?
Four over three pi? Yeah, let me just, yeah, let me just write the answer, it's a Y of X T equals, so it would be zero point two. Sin of four over three pi X plus four pi omega plus pi. Four over three, I get it because K equals two pi over lambda. And we have lambda. So I'll, I'll show you, I'll box the equations that I'm, I'm ma- like, I'm. You know, just using out of nowhere, so. These are the equations I'm using out of nowhere. That I had to come up with from my formula sheets, yeah, these are the ones. I guess technically this one too.
Adam, when do we put the, so how do we take into account, um, if it's going the negative or positive X direction?
That's the sign of this thing right there.
But when it, when it came to like simple harmonic motion with a singular, um. Like a singular. Variable where, where we just had X of T, w- would we change the sign of the phase angle instead? It would be, well, omega T plus or minus phi.
Well, this is for an entire wave traveling along like in a medium. Rap- compared to this one simple harmonic oscillator in place, like one bead on a, on a string. Uh, this co- this is like the equation of the entire wave as it goes along the entire string.
Each element is a simple harmonic oscillator itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it would be, positive is going in the negative X direction and negative is going in the positive X direction.
Yeah, that's right.
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, so for a simple harmonic oscillator, for like, I just a normal X of T, positive for positive X and negative for negative X?
But lo- look at the equation here, so, so X of T equals, it was A, oh, my face is probably in the way, isn't it? X of T equals A cosine. Omega T plus phi, right? So, yeah, if I wanna move it, yeah, then this, it's still the opposite of what you think, so plus is going in the negative X direction, minus is going in the positive X direction. So, um, it's this sign right there, yeah, but it's not like moving with time, I guess it is moving with time. But it's not like the, the shape of the wave isn't moving with time, just like you're moving the initial condition.
Also, um, if you do omega divided by K, you would also end up, you'd end up with your velocity, so like. That's another way to look at the equation if you're confused.
Uh, could you just explain like, uh, how you got like pi again, like the phase angle?
Yeah, well, so I put the condition that they said, they said the zero with, the, the, the bead at position zero at time zero. Has a height of zero, so that means zero equals zero point two sine, put zero in for these variables, they go away. Plus phi, right, sorry, uh, well, plus phi, but it's just phi in there now. So that tells me that sine of phi equals zero, divide both sides by zero point two, sine of phi equals zero. And then I do sine inverse, I guess I can write that here, I say phi equals sine inverse zero. And so sine inverse zero is pi N for some N. Pi N for some integer N, and then we have to decide which, which integer, well, okay, so if it, if it was zero, if I, the phase angle was zero. Then I would start moving in the positive Y direction, but that's not what I want, the question tell, told us is moving downwards in the negative Y direction. So I'm, that must mean I start at, in the middle of the sine wave, right, so that would be at pi phase angle. Technically, you could also, now we know how to take partial derivatives, so you could take a partial derivative. Solve for that, but doesn't really matter. Okay, so good to move on to question four?
Yes.
Okay, good, sounds good, thank you. Um, a traveling sinusoidal wave on a string is described by the following equation, that where T in seconds and X is in meters. If the string has a linear mass density of that, what is the tension of the string? Okay, not bad, so, um, remember V equals square root T over mu. We're looking for the tension, so V squared mu equals T. So do we know the linear mass density? We do, we just need to find V, well, you can see right here, V is omega over K. V equals omega over K, so this is omega squared over K squared, mu equals T. And we have these numbers, that's K, that's omega. So it's gonna be. Four over twenty-five times zero point zero one. So, one point six times ten to the negative three. Any questions about that one? I'm going a little fast, cause I wanna get all the questions from, as, and we wouldn't, we're not gonna be able to finish this other test, but I wanna be able to finish as many as we can. So, if there's any questions, just tell me, and I will stop, but. Otherwise, I won't move on, so. A loudspeaker on a tall pole broadcasts sound waves equally in all directions, what is the speaker's power output? If the sound level is, sound level is ninety decibels at a distance of twenty meters. Distance of twenty meters, okay, so we're looking for power level. Um, so let me go find the equations for sound, which I have to find now. Yeah, okay, so. Power, okay, I equals, it's right on the screen there too, is the power over four pi R squared. Then we need to say that we're looking for the power, right, so power, let's say P equals I four pi R squared, now how do we get I? Well, we can take the decibel formula, ten log base ten of I over I naught. And rearrange that for I, we know B, so we can find the intensity, so it would be B over ten. Equals log base ten I over I naught. Ten to the B over ten equals I over I naught. So I naught, uh, ten to the B over ten equals I, it's I. So finally, combine that here. P equals I naught, ten to the B over ten, four pi R squared. I naught is ten to the negative twelve. Times, uh, ten to the B over ten, ninety over ten. Times four times pi times something squared, the something is the radius, which is twenty meters. So I got five point O two. Five point O two. Any questions about that?
Just go a little bit, for some reason, I couldn't hear you for like a solid, like fifteen seconds or so.
Okay, is anybody else, did anybody else experience that, like?
Maybe it's just me.
I didn't.
Okay, nah, I, I heard you loud and clear, Adam.
He said, did anybody else, he didn't ask for you guys, okay?
So, um, allow, so the question was, like, sorry, do you want me to go over how I did this?
Yeah.
Yeah. So first formula I'm using is this one, uh, intensity is power over four pi R squared. Second formula I'm using is the decibels is ten log ten I over I naught. I'm gonna combine these, because I went, I'm solving for P here, I'm solving for P, so I'm gonna use this equation to solve for I. Sub that in, I get this equation here. And then I just plug everything in. Make sense?
Yeah.
Uh, you get I naught from the equation of I, like the first equation, the number one?
To get I naught, you said?
Yeah, yeah.
I naught is just a constant.
Oh, 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 yes.
Ten to the neg- ten to the negative twelve, yeah. Don't worry. Um, okay, question six, a bat locates insects by emitting ultrasonic chirps. And then listening for echoes from the bugs, suppose a bat chirp has a frequency of that, which is outside the hu- range of human hearing. What is the minimum speed at which the bat would need to fly in or, in order for you, a stationary observer, to barely hear the chirp? Also determine the direction the bat must fly, you may assume the speed of sound is that, okay. So we're gonna use the, um, Doppler effect formula, which is essentially F O equals F S. V plus V naught over V minus V S, right? So here, um, we want the observer's hearing to be twenty thousand hertz, right? Um, but it also says, so, yeah, so I'm gonna write that here, F observed is twenty thousand hertz. F source is twenty-five thousand hertz, the speed of sound in air is three forty-three meters per second. And all we need to do is velocity of observer, velocity of source, so we're looking for velocity of the source, velocity of the observer. Um, well, it says stationary observer, so V naught equals zero, so we just solve for V S here. I guess I can just right away, this is, I can just say this is zero, to, to like simplify that solution a little bit. So, uh, solving for this is just gonna be V minus V S equals F S over F observer. Times V. Zero. And then I wanna know V S, so it's gonna be V minus F S over F zero times V equals V S. Yeah. So, and then let's determine, yeah, let's figure out the direction too, so you're, if you're here. And the bat is flying towards you with a high frequency, then. It will, trying to think what will happen.
You would be hi- hearing a higher frequency.
Higher frequency, right, that's what I was thinking, yeah, so it wants, it used to fly away from you.
Yeah.
Yeah, needs to fly away from you. So it's going away from you, which means V S is negative, V S is negative.
Right, you want it to get bigger.
Yeah. So F S over F zero, V equals negative, sorry, that's V source, negative V source, so this is. Combining with the picture here, right, so we know it's away from us now, so now I can just solve, I can say, uh, F S over F zero. Minus V equals V S, and now, let's solve for it. It's gonna be, I guess I didn't actually have to do this step, you could just solve for V S, you get a negative number, and then, uh, that would mean away from you, that would probably be a better way of doing it, but. I'm already this far, so.
Yeah, cause that was just direction, hey?
Yeah.
I needed a negative, okay.
So twenty-five thousand, oh, I missed a V, didn't I? Times three forty-three minus three forty-three, so I got eighty-five point seventy-five. Eighty-six meters per second. Meters per second away. Okay, any question about this? Almost at the standing waves, I think, not this question, but the question after that is a standing wave, oh no, this one's a standing wave, it says standing wave in the solution. So finally, we get to stand, there's a couple standing wave questions. Uh, let's see. Yeah, this is fine. Two harmonic waves traveling in opposite directions interfere to produce a standing wave described by this. Where M, no, where X is measured in meters, T is, is that meters? Yeah, T is measured in seconds. What is the wavelength of the interfering waves? Wavelength of the interfering waves, oh yeah, we result in this. Oh, so I have to use that equation, there's some sort of, remember, there's some sort of big equation that I'm supposed to be using here. So they have.
Well, so isn't basically just the wavelength of this, uh, equation? Isn't that what it's asking?
Yeah, cause we have our K value, so can we just isolate for? Uh, was it called lambda?
Yeah.
Is that just two power K, isn't K just two or something? I'm missing.
Y of X T equals. Sin K X. Cosine omega T, so we know that K equals two, omega equals five. And we're just looking wavelength of the interfering waves.
Yeah, so just do two pi over K and K is two, so it just gives you pi and the answer is pi.
Oh yeah, makes sense, okay.
So are we assuming they have the same, um, they have the same wave number and like beat and all of that? Like the waves traveling in opposite direction?
They already did the addition for us.
They, yeah, they did the addition, exactly, this is just describing the wave, this is just.
Cause you know how we have the one where it's like, car only one trigonometric function, this is the same thing as that one, you just take this two trigonometric functions, that's literally it.
Okay, so K in this scenario is the wavelength of the actual standing wave, or sorry, it's the wave number of the standing wave.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be able to tell the, the actual like individual wavelengths per se, if they were different?
Yeah, you can't, you can only, you can only tell the result, cause that, cause we already know things about the result and, uh.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
No, but it's good, cause it's just like two pi over two, which is pi, which is ninety meters.
Yeah.
But it's, I missed what you said, so you, you wouldn't be able to, right?
No, you wouldn't, cause you already know things about the original wave, uh, I mean, the, the combined wave. And you know what it says, like Y, uh, Y X of T equals three meters sine, whatever, cos, whatever. That's like the result, that's like the final one, so basically, just think of it as a, a question.
I know what he's asking, he's asking what if the wavelengths were different, if the wavelengths were different, then it wouldn't be standing wave, it would be like beat.
That's beats, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be different.
Oh, right, okay, yeah, they have to be, they have to be the exact, yeah, right, okay, okay, cool, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah?
No, no, it's okay, it's okay.
Okay. Which of the following frequencies could not be present on a standing wave in a one meter long pipe within one open end and one closed end, the fundamental frequency of the pipe is? That many hertz, so which one of it could not be present as a standing wave on a one meter long pipe, okay? Well, we just look at the nth harmonic for a one half open, one half closed pipe is. Gotta find it one second. Pipe is only open on.
N V over four L.
N V over four L, yeah, I see it, yeah, there you go, thank you, N V over four L, so it's a one meter long pipe. The fundamental frequency is eighty-five, so I know that eighty-five equals V over four. So, um, V over, so V is eighty-five times four. Three forty, V equals three forty, so now we just gotta ask, hey, well, for the next harmonic. Uh, but you only.
What about L? Actually.
L is one.
You could just, oh, okay, sorry about that.
Don't worry.
You could just multiply the initial frequency by three, five and seven, I'm pretty sure.
Oh yeah, that's true, cause the only difference is the, is that you're going up by the harmonics, yeah, okay, so that's true, so we just take the. Uh, eighty-five, multiply that by three, I get two fifty-five, and so eighty-five times five, I get. Eighty-five times five, I get two, four twenty-five, so I'll just cancel out these ones, these ones, well, okay, I already can tell, the numbers are gonna get, keep getting bigger. This is the first harmonic, so it can't be that middle one.
Uh, Adam, so, so in a like half open half, or like one end open, one end closed, right, so our. Standing wave is, is, uh, only present for N equals one, three, five, seven, right, so that's.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool, so that's, so one seventy would require N equals two, which isn't correct, okay, cool, thanks.
Exactly, yeah. Okay. Probably got time for one more question, so here's this one, looks a little bit involved, so, let's see.
Uh, sorry, for the last question, we didn't need the velocity to find the newer frequencies?
We didn't, we didn't need it now.
Okay, that, that's surprising, cause it's in the equation.
It just, it just needs to, all, the only difference between the harmonics is like, the frequencies, is that you're going up by some odd harmonic. So the velocity is constant, so all you, all you do is you just multiply it by that new harmonic.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so probably our last question, so yeah, uh, consider a hypothetical dense astronaut, astronomical. Astronomical object with a mass of two times ten to the thirty, uh, kilograms about the mass of the sun. Find the, and the radius of that, assuming you could stand on the surface of this object, if you fired a gun straight into the air, how high above the surface would the bullet go before trick, we had this question in the last. Um, how far hi- high above the surface would the bullet go before turning around? The mass of a bullet is fifty grams and its speed is that when it leaves the gun. The mass of a bullet is fifty grams and its speed is that when it leaves the gun, ignore any friction or drag forces on the bullet.
It's the escape speed or no, because it hasn't reached the velocity that's needed, or would you still use that equation?
What, how high above the surface, no, we'd still use that equation, I'm quite certain.
Okay.
So we would go to uh, escape speed and the final radius. Given by, when an object is thrown into the air is given by this formula. So essentially, that's it, just plug everything in, I think, yeah, you just plug everything in, let's see. G is six point six seven four two times ten to the negative eleven. Times the mass creating the field, which is two times ten to the thirty. Over.
Are you writing something right now?
No, I'm typing in my calculator.
Oh.
Six point um, six point six seven four two times ten to the negative eleven, times uh, two times ten to the thirty. Over the initial radius, which was one point four times ten to the fourteen. Minus. V I squared over two. V I squared, eh, well, V I is. Eight hundred. Over two, and I get. Not the answer, uh.
Did you do eight hundred squared, sound like you didn't?
Eight hundred. Yeah, I did do eight hundred squared.
Oh, okay.
My losing.
And exactly the radius for escapes?
Yeah, it's saying how high above the surface would the bullet go before turning around?
I'm surprised.
Everyone had one go.
So did you get, did you?
Oh, yeah, 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 and then subtract from this answer, one point four times ten to the fourteen. And I get seven point one times ten to the thirteen, yes, that's right.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go, that's it, thank you.
Great, that'd be like the max, so that'd be like the maximum dis- distance.
The answer I, the answer I got out of this was this.
Is the distance traveled?
But I want, no, no, is is the, is this distance, what I want is the distance traveled. So this is, it's a terrible picture, but this is the center of the. This is the center of the planet, so I got this total red line from this answer. That got me this total red line, but I wanna know how high above the surface, I wanna know this distance. So I do the radius of the planet minus my, oh, my answer minus the radius of the planet.
So your R I was the radius um, of the planet, right?
Yeah, that's right.
And then. M is big M, right, like?
M is the mass of the planet. I didn't use the mass of the bullet at all.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Yeah, okay, so just to be clear, we found the RF, which was the actual, like. The radius plus the distance travel, like the radius of the, from the center to the surface and then.
Yeah.
Okay.
We found this total, this total.
Like when you say total, you're pointing at the entire line, right, entire, like, okay, yeah. And then you subtracted what they gave us, which was the initial and found the distance traveled.
Yeah, they gave us this, this is R I, this this distance.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Okay.
Didn't use the bullet anywhere, right?
Yeah. Because I think even with the, there was a spaceship one when we did in the web design, we didn't use the mass either, because it's like. Compared to the whatever it's being drawn to, it's like. The infinitesimally is small, so it doesn't really matter, it's just like speed, okay? Remember, guys, don't doubt yourself.
Get into space, huh?
I don't know, right?
Call bullshit.
Because when you do, when you do the inverse, which is um, something you're leaving now. It's like, all right, now if you take into account the mass of the planet, and it's like, yeah, we don't do that here, so you need a shit ton of velocity. All right, guys, remember, physics is just plug and chuck, don't doubt yourself, just find the formula, who puts shit in, okay?
There you go.
This this would, this would have been derived from, I guess, like the conservation of energy, right, and then I guess the.
I can't quite remember how, yeah, but yeah.
If the answer for this question, if you look at the actual like, the actual file, he, that's what they do, they do conservation of energy and they just derive. This, the.
Oh, they derive this formula right here, oh, yeah, that's why I was looking at this and I was like, wow, that's a lot of, that's a lot of work for this one.
No, they literally, I mean, they derive it, they multiply the whole thing by two to get rid of the one half on the V squared. But it's the same thing, it is, it is the same equation.
Okay, guys, well, that's everything for the session, it's everything for PCS one twenty five for me. Um, that's everything, that's the last problem we're gonna go through, but I'm here for just a little bit longer to answer any more questions, but yeah, good luck on the uh, final, everybody. I hope it goes well, and yes.
Yeah, good luck, everyone.
Adam, thanks for the whole year, man, I don't know if this is the last one or not, probably not cuz you're crazy, but.
I still got, I still got more, so I'm doing, I'm doing ECN tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So could, so I was looking at a question seven from the twenty seventeen exam.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, do you want me to just read it out to you? Uh, in the solution, E total is equal to negative G M M over two R.
Yeah.
Is that just like an equation that we're supposed to know?
I didn't know it, so I wrote it here, total energy in circular orbit is half the potential energy, so that's essentially what this is, yeah. Didn't know that until now.
Oh, that's very important.
If you, if you, if you, I think, I think this one's in Jasper's uh, formula sheet, but yeah, I mean, there's also a different formula for an elliptical orbit, so like.
There is, yeah.
If they do ask you, then make sure you know that.
Yeah, that, I think this is the better uh.
Get wrecked, Adam.
Total energy in circular orbit. Is half the potential.
Is half the potential energy.
I'll be honest, I'll be honest, I think, I think Springer might have said this once in an offhanded comment, just like talking about it.
No, he did, it was on his slide too, it was like a big point, like remember.
Wait, this was a big one, I just forgot it?
The defendant, yeah, the defendant pleads guilty. I already have enough nightmares with defendants and challengers, okay, I don't need anymore. Wait, what's the formula for the elliptic then?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we, do we need that?
I don't know.
R, it's A and A is the long axis, uh, long axis of B.
So does B just not matter for it?
It doesn't.
I don't think so, I guess.
It's irrelevant.
I'm sure there's a reason. Yeah, I'm sure there's a reason, our simple minds just are idiots.
I'm sure there's a reason, it'll be fine.
Yeah, I'm trying to look for Jasper's formula sheet, said completely, yo, all right, guys. Thanks, Adam, thanks everyone for participating. So let's get this straight, we're all using Jasper's formula sheet and uh, the notes for, from um, Adam. To get through this, all right, let's go.
Watch, everybody failed because the equations are wrong.
They they have to curve it and then we'd still be fine. Yeah. We've only done one exam so far, my head hurts like. God, bye, guys.
Bye bye, everyone.
Bye, good luck.
Oh, the math thing, there's the math study hall today. Alright, it's four hours long, so yeah, that's also a thing.
But what time is this?
It's okay, just snort a line of cocaine halfway through and you'll be all right.
Yeah, you're a supplier, or you're making?